Boy, it got quiet. Appreciate your patience, Sarah. We have a lot, lot of balls up in the air tonight. Lot, lot to do. We'll call the time at 6:03. We're actually reconvening. We've been in executive session since 5:00. So, again, appreciate your patience, Sarah. We're getting started just a, just a hair late, but, but welcome. Welcome to tonight's meeting. At this time, I've asked Barbara Townsend to provide us with our invocation.
Lay your head with me, please. Heavenly Father, we humbly and gratefully come to you tonight to thank you for your protection and guidance through this school year. I thank you for the teachers, nurses, administrative staff, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, maintenance and custodial crews. For their dedication to our students and community this school year, I pray that they are rested and revitalized over the summer break. Father, I pray for our Stars students who will graduate Thursday and our Granbury High School students who will graduate Friday next. May they feel pride in their accomplishments and prepared for what their futures hold. Please bless this board this evening with wisdom as we make decisions concerning G.I.S.D. for the 2021-2022 school year and beyond. Father, this has been a hard year. Many are still hurting physically, financially, and emotionally. Be our comfort, healer, and strength. Show us how we are to be a conduit. May we, as a community, not forget the lessons we learned this year. As we fed the hungry, supported the jobless, and the local business owner, and gave shelter to those who were cold. May we remember that we are all better when we lift each other up. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. And at this time, if you please rise, trustee Chris Willis is going to lead us in the pledges.
I would like allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, justice for all. I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, at this time, we are agenda item number six. This is our public comment time. Open forum where we welcome the public to come up. We do ask if you just sign or fill out one of these slips. It looks like we do have one person that did sign up tonight. Is that all we have? Okay. So at this time, if I can ask, and hopefully I pronounce your name right. Is it Cara, Carol Sokol? Sokol? Pardon me. Carol, come on up to the DIAS if you would. Thank you. It said you're the only one. You can get half an hour.
No, I, hopefully I've got three minutes and we're done.
Okay.
Okay.
Very well. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. I appreciate you and appreciate all your hard work very much. I'm here tonight on behalf of the school bus drivers for Granbury Transportation. And we have quite a few people in the back. Raise your hands. They all came out in support today. What this is, is I wanted to make just an impact statement. I wanted you to hear from one of us about what it is like for us to be drivers and, I get a little teary. How important this job is to us. A lot of us have come from other worlds. Some of us, I wrote down a few people. We have retired military. We have a Navy SEAL. We have master electricians and IBM programmers. We have people who worked for Bell Helicopter, UPS, you name it. And we've all come to work for transportation, which is a really great opportunity, and we really love it. We all love G.I.S.D. We love Granbury. The issue that we're having right now is unfortunately that our pay scale is just not keeping up with the other districts. And it's causing a lot of our drivers to go to other districts or for us to fall short on our numbers. So I wanted to just come tonight, I'm going to hand these over to Faith, and she can just, you know, whenever she gets around to getting them to you, that's fine. It's just a statement from me and my phone number if you need to contact me, and a little bit about why I'm here. Also, there are a couple of charts in here that we did. We did some research and looked at the other districts. We called HR. We called the directors of transportation so that we could have an idea what was going on just from our perspective. I know that that is also something that Brian, who's here, has been working on diligently to see what is competitive for other districts. One of the other charts in here is a chart. It does not have employee names, but it does have years of experience and what our current salaries are. That's in here. I also have one other chart that is the comparative pay scale for districts our size. So I have a copy for each of you in here, and whenever she gets around to it, that's fine. I don't want to go and play in charts because everybody can look at that on their own. We're all grownups. Okay. I just, I wanted to say that we are really vital. We are really relevant, and we are really important to this district. And sometimes I think people don't realize how important bus drivers actually are. So, I'm not really sure if everybody knows what we have to do to be a bus driver. We don't just get on a bus. You can teach anyone to drive a bus. You can't teach anyone to be a bus driver. We are required to be fingerprinted, background checked, drug tested. We have to have a commercial driver's license, which includes written tests, a driving test. I can parallel park a school bus. Most people cannot do that. We also have a 20-hour certification that we have to do. Every year, we have to have a physical. Every year, we have to, well, more than once a year, random drug tests and alcohol tests to make sure that we're fit to transport the children. We also, every three years, we have to get a recertification. So all of this is what's involved for us to actually even drive a bus for you. It's not an easy job. I mean, I will tell you, 60 screaming kids driving a 28,000-pound vehicle, it's a scary job. The kids are not well behaved. We don't have attendants or anything like that. We're by ourselves, except for special ed, and those are fantastic people. People who do that job are amazing. But it, it's kind of a scary job. Who we are to the kids, this is really, really important to me, and I'll probably be a little teary in my voice with this. Because we are the first adult these kids see most days. Their parents are gone. They give themselves up. They come out. They meet us and greet us, and then they go to school. A lot of these kids only get two meals a day. Those two meals are at the school. Then we pick them up. We ask how their day was, and we take them home, and a lot of times, we're the last adult they see. We're it. We're also a very, very vital, important part of the Child Abuse and Neglect Reporting Network. We see these kids. We see where they live. We know what their conditions are. And so for us, you know, it's a hard thing to do. I've had to do it three times in my five years that I've had to go and actually go to Child Protective Services and report that a child was being abused. It's, but it's important. It's something that we do and that we are happy to do for this district and for our children. You know, we have done a little research into the fact that this district is really, really great about hiring teachers. They're fantastic. And they even pay a little bit more to get really, really quality teachers. And that's, that's important. I think our kids get a great education. I had four kids graduate from Granbury High School. So, that being said, I really think that that financial support should translate to the bus drivers and to the support staff because it couldn't happen if we didn't do our job. You know, 30% to 40% of the students that go to Granbury ISD schools actually ride the buses. So it's huge. It's 3,000 kids. I think, I think Dawn's last count was 2755 on our last rider count. So it's a lot of kids. Anyway, I already talked about the charts. A lot of people don't really understand that we are on a year-round pay system. And the year-round pay system means that, you know, I'm not going to break it down. I can't. If anybody wants me to, we can do that later. I can email it to you. But our pay is broken down to be spread out through the year. But what that translates to, for me, I make 1462 an hour. I've been here five years. When the numbers are calculated, I get $533 every two weeks. Divide that by the 25 hours for each week, I get $10.66. That's it. $10.66 an hour. And so I feel like we need to do something about this situation. Like I said, I can, you know, we, we are full-time. We are not allowed to apply for unemployment. We, in the summers, if we don't work for the bus barn, we have to go try to find another job. Most people don't want to hire us for two months. So it's hard to find a job. Anyway, this year, I know of at least 10 drivers who are leaving. And that terrifies me. I had a driver actually tell me that the juice wasn't worth the squeeze. And I thought, that's an interesting way to phrase that. But the juice wasn't worth the squeeze. And I don't want people to feel that way. We can't hire new drivers at the rate that's set currently. We just, we can't. People aren't interested. They're going to other districts, and that's so unfortunate. We deserve better than that, and our kids deserve better than that. So in order to, you know, retain drivers, we need to look at the pay and just see if maybe there's something we can do about that. Real quickly, morale. We talk about morale a lot in the bus barn. We have barbecues and Hawaiian parties and anything to boost us up because at 5:00 in the morning, we're waking up, we're driving in the dark. I watched a guy fly by me yesterday, 60 miles an hour backwards, hydroplaning, down 377. And I said, wow, I'm going to go get in a bus now and drive in this weather. Terrifying. We just, we're understaffed. And because of that, we really can't take our vacation days because we're really dedicated. We're going to show up. If they say we're short-staffed, we'll come in. Today is my mother's 81st birthday. I'm here. So it tells you, we're really dedicated to you. Our lead drivers cannot get on our buses because they're driving routes. They're doing the job. And that means that if I have a discipline issue, I can't go to my lead and say, hey, jump on my bus and help me discipline this child or help me find a solution to this problem because he's not available. And that is not, that is not on Brian. That is not on Jeremy. They really try. They work really hard. But we just, we have an issue. They just, they can't afford to lose drivers. They can't afford to discipline. They can't afford to even do a write-up on us. You know, if I do something, really trying to discipline me or say, hey, you have to take a day off, they can't afford to do that. That's not fair. They deserve to be able to do their job and do their job responsibly for the kids and for you. Let me see. You know, I did, in the papers that I sent with you, did put a proposal for an amount. I think that's something that you guys would need to discuss. It's in there. I, I do see that it's a significant increase from what we're currently making. I'm not going to say what that number is in a public forum because I don't think that's appropriate. I think it's something you need to discuss and then discuss with transportation and with Brian. You know, I did also in there make a note about, and I will say this, the attendance could sure use some help. And those are the people who are special ed attendants. They are probably a dollar and a half under the other districts. So we really need to do something about them, and we need to do something about the drivers. And also, regular pay increases across the board, I know it's hard. I know it is. But I also know that we could find a way to entice people to stay and to give merit raises or just a small raise, 20 cents a year. It's nothing, but it would mean the world to our drivers. Anyway, basically, that's really all I had to say to you today, other than we really love Granbury. We really love G.I.S.D. And we all really love our kids. Our kids are really important. But honestly, the juice isn't worth the squeeze. And I, I really want to stay, but I don't know that I can stay next year. I can't justify to my mother, leaving her at home and coming to a job where I just, I don't make enough money. You know, I just, I hate to be that way, but you know, sometimes money is just what it is. Anyway, I appreciate your time. I, I hope that you will consider looking at giving us a competitive rate. You have all the data in your charts. And I appreciate your time. Thank you so much for allowing me to come speak to you. And yay, I'm glad to see you at school. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Sokol. Thank you. And with all the drivers that came tonight, would you raise your hand or stand? We want to see you. I, I, thank you. Thank you so much. Unfortunately, the Texas Open Meetings Act doesn't allow me or the board to comment on what Ms. Sokol just talked about. But I can assure you, especially those of you who are out there representing our transportation department, that this board and the superintendent hears you loud and clear. And we do love you. We know what you do. We know it's a difficult job. And I can assure you, we will be looking at this. Thank you for the information. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Okay. I don't believe we have anyone else signed up for comment tonight, so we're going to go ahead and, and roll into our achievement spotlight. We've got a lot tonight. Usually do in the, in the month of May. Lots of very deserving young people deserve recognition. So be patient with us, but gosh, let's enjoy it too. This is the fun part of the year. Dr. Glenn, you want to take it away?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, we'll have Jeremy Ross, high school principal, come up to the podium for achievement spotlight. And he'll be presenting our vow and vow this year.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity. This is one of my favorite nights of the, of the year for, to get to share with you our top two graduates of the class of 2021. These two students have done an amazing job. They've battled their way through difficult courses and extracurricular activities and late nights of homework and study groups and all kinds of competition to end up as the, as the top two graduates in our graduating class. And a school like ours, that, that is large, that's very competitive, it is, it is really worth noting the accomplishment of these two. So without any further ado, let me introduce to you our class salutatorian, Ms. Megan Bednarz. Megan is a, she's going to be a Red Raider. Come up here with me. She, she just, she just told me what she was going to study, and I think biomedical, something.
Biochemistry.
Yeah. Biochemistry at, at Texas Tech. We're, we're very proud of her. She's worked very hard, and so, Megan, congratulations. Valedictorian for the class of 2021 is Mr. Jonathan Rositis. Jonathan is going to be going to the University of Chicago and studying physics.
Yes, sir.
Physics, and we're very proud of him as well. Just a, a moment of personal privilege, Jonathan is a friend of Brett's. Brett is also a member of the class of 2021. He is not a, as high-performing as these two. Sorry, Jency. But we took, we took Brett for a birthday party to an escape room in Fort Worth about three or four years ago, including Jonathan and a bunch of their friends. And if it weren't for Mr. Rositis here, we'd probably still be there. Anyway, congratulations, Jonathan. Very proud of you, sir.
And it's a pretty big crowd out there. Are the parents here? Would you raise your hand or jump up and down? I'm sure you're jumping up and down. All right, great. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. Up next, we have our Memorial Day Essay Contest Campus Winners, and I'll ask Tricia Schut to come to the podium.
Good evening. We are super excited to recognize the campus winners of our Memorial Day Essay Contest. And tonight, we have Ms. Julia Pennell and Police Chief Mitch Galvan, and they are going to help with this presentation. Ms. Pennell?
How exciting. Isn't this a fantastic room? I get to do a lot in the old one over at Foreign Training Center, so. Good evening, Superintendent Glenn, School Board Chair Jackson, and members of the School Board DIAS. I'm here representing two organizations. I'm representing the Citizens Committee on that planned Memorial Day and the Veterans Day. I'm acting chairman, filling in, well, no one fills in for J.C. Campbell. But until that position is filled, he instructed me, you have to do this because we cannot let this die. So regardless of when J.C. speaks, you listen. The next organization is Friends of Memorial Lane. I'm chairperson of that, and we plan the events. And normally, we would have a side event at the park, but we get to have side events starting in July. So when Tricia contacted me through Michael Ross and said, what about doing this at the board? I thought, how exciting, because you get to see and hear them. So this is where we are today. It's been, it's been determined that all activities done this year for Memorial Day will be, will be done in honor of J.C. Campbell. He was a founding member of our board and was the chairperson and co-founder of the Citizens Committee, the creator of the Memorial Day Essay Contest, and served his country well as, as in the Navy. When starting the Essay Contest, he wanted the children to understand the true meaning of Memorial Day, not just another hot dog day. He also asked if Friends of Memorial Lane would officially take over the Essay Contest to keep it alive and well. So here we are. Therefore, from this day on, this year and years forthcoming, it will be known as the J.C. Campbell Memorial Day Essay Contest, as hosted by Friends of Memorial Lane. Tommy lapsed. And when Mr. Ross contacted me and said, you need to get in touch with Tricia. What do you want to do about this? Well, thankfully, Tricia is who Tricia is, and she suggested it, and what a great idea. I've also invited Police Chief Mitch Galvan, who, who actually will be announcing the winner. I don't know. He doesn't know. He had personally jumped in last year to fill the financial gap. Each campus winner will receive a special card, a special freedom bracelet, and one of these special designed eagles that says Memorial Day, Memorial Lane. They are all winners. So I'm going to call their names as they come up here. But I will tell you something. We no longer have Bills and Johns and Marys and Suze. So I hope I do your names beautifully justice. From Acton Elementary School, Kennedy Cogburn. So they can see your beautiful face. From Bronner Intermediate, Jocelyn Current. I told them, they forgot to send me the message that this was Black and White Day. From Ambroino Steam Academy, Lena Tiblich. And from Oakwood School, Mailey Oliver. So you get the privilege.
Oh.
Nobody knows until now.
Until now.
And so I want you to know something, though. Raise up your hand, all of you. You're looking at a winner. A winner. So the winner will be asked to come up and, yes, read your essay. And I happen to have copies of all of them. Go ahead, sir.
Crimeral.
And they get, what did they get?
A hundred dollars.
A $100 Chris bill from Mitch.
All right. You ladies ready? And the winner of the 2021 Memorial Day Essay Contest is Mailey Oliver. Congratulations, young lady. And I'm guessing that you're...
What Memorial Day means to me. Memorial Day is more than just a holiday. The last Monday of May is set apart to honor those who sacrificed their lives so we could live ours. To me, Memorial Day reminds me to live a life of serving others, as I remember those who died serving our country. My granddad chose to live this life every day was Memorial Day. He did not lose his life while in war, so Memorial Day is not really about him. But my granddad, J.C. Campbell, lived the rest of his life to the fullest because he wanted to honor his friends who had died. Memorial Day to me means to live a life like my granddad did and serve other people. Memorial Day meant everything to my granddad. My granddad learned that the life is a gift and should be spent serving others. So he lived every day like it was Memorial Day. Memorial Day was important to my granddad because his Navy ship later sank and many sailors lost their lives. He spent the rest of his life making sure those sailors were not forgotten. Granddad honored his friends by planning a ship reunion every year where all their families from his Navy ship would meet a different city in the U.S. to tell stories and remember those who died. Granddad organized this reunion to show respect to, for those who died to protect our freedoms. Granddad was always trying to teach honor and respect. One way he did this was start coin collections for his grandkids. His love for coins is example of how much he loved his country. At family meals, he always circled us up and would pray and end with, thank you, God, for our service men and women. for our servicemen and women. Even in his prayers, he remembered those who have sacrificed. At his own funeral, he was being example of love and service. In March, my granddad passed away and many people gathered at his funeral. After the funeral, I told my dad, it seems like we found out how much a person means to us after they are gone. As I write this essay, I realize it must be the same feeling granddad felt as he left funerals of servicemen and women he knew. The Navy presented our family with a special American flag showing how much he was honored. When he left the church to go to the grave, cars were pulled over and people were standing outside their cars. Everyone in Granby on 377 at 4:00 P.M. that Monday afternoon got out of their car to honor my granddad. I know this kind of respect was shown because he was someone who lived every day like it was Memorial Day. Since he also a firefighter, all firefighters in our town came at the grave, those who, they who pretended he was getting his last firefighter call. The voice on the radio tried to call J.C. to his next call, but when there was no answer, they said, your service is done. While to anyone else, it might seem like being a firefighter had nothing to do with Memorial Day. To me, it is another example of granddad teaching me how to live a life of service. I will live my life for God, so at my funeral, people will know what I only cared about was spreading God's love and using my life to serve others. I recently watched the movie Saving Private Ryan with my dad. In one part, the character looks at the graves and remember he got to live while all his friends didn't. For me, a movie didn't teach me about serving others since my freedom is for others' sacrifice. Granddad taught me that, since he lived his life like every day was Memorial Day, so will I. This is what Memorial Day means to me, because really, it meant everything to him.
And there's your card.
And Macy, here's your card. Congratulations, that was an incredible job, thank you. I know we've got some parents, saw a couple pop up, take pictures. Would you please raise your hand or make it known? Thank you for bringing these kids, thanks for supporting them in this Essay Contest. And Chief Galvan, I don't know where he disappeared to, but, oh, there he is. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, men and women, for the service they provide this community. We really appreciate you guys. God bless you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. At this time, we'll invite up to the podium Cindy Jackson and Cindy Leatherman, who will present our UIL Academic Meet Contestants.
Good evening and thank you for recognizing our UIL academic students at Granbury High School. UIL Academics is, it is a contest that represents many fields of academic study, including accounting and spelling, computer science, computer applications, and so many different other subject areas. And we compete against 5A students all across the state in various ways. It was a very challenging year, this year, in UIL Academics, as we were not able to compete in person until the very end, and we were competing virtually. But we had four students this year who qualified for the State UIL Academic Meet, and we are incredibly proud of those four students, and we would like to recognize them this evening. And they are Nathan Gibson, who competed in Current Issues and Events. Carter McKay, who competed in Social Studies. Madeline Rickert, who competed in Social Studies. And Jonathan Rositis, who competed in Science. And it was a very difficult round of competition with a virtual district meet and then an in-person region meet. And these students competed against all of the 5A top students across the state of Texas. And we're very pleased with their results. And I will speak about Nathan and Madeline and Carter, because I coached those three students. Carter finished 10th in the state in Social Studies, and I'm incredibly proud of that, especially since he's only an 11th grader, and I get him again next year. And I'm very pleased and proud that Madeline finished 7th in the state, competing with the Friscos and the Highland Parks and all of the Houston area 5A schools. And I'm incredibly proud of you, Madeline, and very sad to see her go. If I could find a way to keep her in high school, I certainly would, but that is unfortunately not going to happen. But I'm very grateful for your support and that of Mr. Ross and your funding in our budget that we can keep these students academically competing. UIL Academics increases test scores. It teaches so many different things. It teaches study skills, but mostly, it teaches that learning is an endless and thrilling journey. And that is what makes me incredibly proud of these students' efforts. And I will let Cindy speak specifically to UIL Science.
Good evening. Thank you for honoring these students. They have really achieved a lot qualifying for state. And I wanted to say a few words about Jonathan Rositis. There's a history there. I have had him since he was a sophomore, and that was my first year coaching. And I have to tell you, the first day that I met Jonathan was, he walked into my first practice session, and I handed out a set of questions from a released contest. And they took a few minutes to look them over. I specifically told them, I really know the chemistry mostly, so let's look over that. And Jonathan proceeds to pick one of the hardest questions on there and asks me to explain it. And so I'm looking at it and I'm thinking, okay, is this really a good question to explain to a beginner? And so I just dive right in. I go in and start explaining it. But Jonathan, he just has this knack for asking questions, and he keeps asking questions. And I think that that is really, really what has built his foundation for learning, because he just knows how to direct those questions. Even though I would, you know, maybe come up with something to show him on the board to learn, he just really has a way to ask you the right thing. Ms. Jackson, where do you get a mole from? What's that? Ms. Jackson, what does this mean? But he just did that. And he led his team to defeating all of District in his sophomore year. And then he just went on. He never gave up through the pandemic. He showed up to all the practice sessions. He zoomed in, as much as we hated zooming, he zoomed in. And he competed in every virtual competition he possibly could. And then senior year rolls around. And let me tell you, I don't know what I would have done without Jonathan's senior year. I mean, he just took, he took charge, he took it by the reins. I went into an emergency quarantine right before Christmas, and he contacted me. He said, okay, I'll just, I'll lead them, I can show them combustion analysis. By the way, that was the first question he asked me about. And so guess what? He's teaching combustion analysis his senior year to his younger peers. And then he goes on, we move on through the year, and all of a sudden, I have to have an emergency appendectomy right before District. Well, here comes Jonathan. Oh, I'll take over, I can do it, I'll take care of him, I'll lead him. And he did just that. And it just, he has really, really done a great job with the team. He's not just in it for himself, he's in it for the team, and I have really appreciated that about him. He is a natural leader, or he's had really good training from his parents that make him look like a natural leader. And just, he's just done a great job, and I'm really proud of him for that. I have to, I'll be remiss if I don't tell you the most memorable moment that I have had with Jonathan, and that was preparing for state. He has, he has a real passion for defending his thinking, but he does it with such eloquence, speaking his mind. He will defend his thinking even against Dr. Anderson, who was the chemistry writer. I mean, we argued and argued over the significance of the volume of a gas particle one session, and he defended his thinking, walking out the door. But it's been a real joy, and it's been a real privilege, and I hate to see him go. But I look forward to what he's going to do, because he's really going to do some big things at University of Chicago. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson, would one of you like to speak to what these youngsters are eligible for in the way of scholarships, having competed at state?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Harrington. There is a large section of scholarships available known as TILF, and I don't remember at this moment what that stands for, but it's related to UIL Academics. And those scholarships are only available, and there's about 30 to 40 of them, only available to students who compete at the state level in UIL Academics. One of them is actually named for our former basketball coach. And it is the Lita Andrews Scholarship, and it's for students who compete at the state level in UIL Academics and also in basketball. But they now qualify for those scholarships, and there's a small pool of students across the state who can apply for those. And I'm super excited and hopeful to come back and say, you know, we had a Granbury High School student who achieved one of those and is going to school with that money because of their hard work and dedication and their writing and their studying and all that they learned.
While they're waiting on the teachers, if any of you have ever seen an academic coach up front in the heat of battle, listen, they're no different than athletic coaches. These ladies are very intense and do a great job. And if you doubt that, just ask a spouse of one of the coaches. All right, once again, are parents here? I know the Rositis are here. Hey, guys, and there we go, the Rikers. All right, thank you.
All right, we're almost there, almost there. Lot to recognize tonight. At this time, I'll invite Jody Brown and Terry Sellers up to the podium to talk about the UIL State Track and Meat qualifier, State Track Meet Qualifier discus.
Thank you, guys, for having us here tonight. It's, I know I'm excited to be here because what this young man has accomplished, and you held me on some record, some of you guys that have been here longer than I have, I've been here seven years, but just doing some research, we think it's close to 25 years since we've had a male participant in the State Track and Field Meet. So it's a huge accomplishment for this young man, and just the amount of work that he's put in is just unbelievable. And I'm going to let his event coach, Coach Sellers, introduce him, because he spends the majority of the time with him every day, and I'm just, I can't be more prouder of these two than I have in just probably my whole career, just because they're just outstanding young people, and they're so fun to be around. So Coach Sellers, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Coach Brown. This year with Luke has been, it's been fun, been very interesting, to say the least. When we started, he threw 117, I believe, first meet. Not his best, obviously, just getting into the swing of it. I was out first week of February, so practices were very limited. And then when we get to the first meet, his group was in their last throw when the rain started. So the conditions were cold, nasty, they didn't like it, whatever. Excuse is what I say. But anyway, he threw 117, again, good, not great, it was a good first mark. And then from then on, he proceeded to place no worse than fifth at every meet we went to. We get to District, and he just makes the final, out of the prelims, he just makes the final, I think he was six out of eight. Throws, I think, out of bounds on the first throw. Second throw, he PRs, 133, 133 feet, four inches. Holds on to the top spot because it put him at number one, and then his little rival from Brewer out throws him by four feet on that kid's last throw. So he ends up getting second in District. No, he was 137, trust me. Trust me. So we're pumped because that means his season gets to continue. And then from that point on, it was just me and him, just one-on-one. With our throwing practice, we have the one ring, and we've got anywhere from six to eight other throwers out there trying to compete for time, and you know, we're short on time anyway. So to get the one-on-one time with him allowed me to actually see, you know, stuff he was having trouble with, and he could talk to me one-on-one, and we can kind of figure out how some of the stuff went. Then we get to area, and again, he squeaks, I shouldn't say squeak, but I think he was top five prelims, gets to the final throws, and it's between him and the Brewer kid again. He throws 143.7, PR. The Brewer kid throws 143.9. So there's your two inches. So gets second in area. Again, we get to move on, so it's another two weeks, and we, you know, we're kind of joking about some of the stuff. And was it regional or was it the area meet that Myrie Ketchin? The story you read in the paper is actually true. He was, we were in practice, one of his teammates came out to kind of practice with him, give him a little competition. And if you've seen us throw down that field, there's, nobody ever throws straight. It's, that's just the kind of way we throw. For some reason, he's attracted to Pirate River. We've lost many a disc in Pirate River, and we've had to go trucking in there about 30 minutes daily to go find, which luckily, we found him. Yeah, I found the rusted one. Anyway, so he's running down the middle, and one of his teammates throws it, and it's the straightest one you've ever seen. the straightest one you've ever seen. And again, Luke's running right down the middle and I just yell, Luke, watch out. He turns around, he sees it, throws his arm up, hits him right on the elbow of his throwing arm. So I'm thinking, oh, great, you know, we just, we just messed up, screwed ourselves or whatever. And then he goes and PRs at the next of it. So we said, maybe we need to get hit in the elbow every time. But anyway, so fast forward, regional meet, he's struggling, he kind of, little mental case, and he'll tell you he was. And then he goes, fifth throw, PRs, beats the, beats the field by four feet. So he wins regional, we get to go to state and from then it's just, I thought it was just icing on the cake. It was, no one's made it this far in a long time. He's put in all the work, no one deserves it more than him. He's not just a track star, he's, he powerless. I believe he placed eighth in region, in regionals this year. What'd you get last year? You went region, you went regional too last year in powerlifting?
I can't remember.
Can't remember. But he's, he's placed in region, he placed eighth in regional this year in powerlifting. He's principal to the player, last three years. He was three away as a freshman from Winning State. So, and he's what, top 25 in class, something like that?
Thirty.
Top 30 in class. So he, kids, he's, he's humble. But he's a competitor above all and I love having practiced with him. He's, sorry, just reminiscing, it's, it's fun to be around him. I mean, you can have a bad day, you can be around him and, and everybody just smiles even when he's having a bad day. Because I mean, it's just fun. Go to state, he enters state eighth out of nine competitors. He ends up PRing again, so every single meet he's hit since district, he's PR'd and we end up finishing seventh in state this year. Good thing is, is he's a junior, so he gets to come back and we get to attempt to run him back and try to get a little bit better place than seventh this, uh, this next season. But I'm looking forward to it. I know he is, the day we came back, so that evening we came back from state, the next day he's out throwing again because that's just the kind of kid he is. Yeah, I mean, I can't really say anything else about him. I mean, kid's a competitor. See him in the classroom, see him in the, in the halls, see him in band, like he, kid just competes. He actually told me a story where he competed with some of his teammates in band in an eating contest and he won, so. Believe it or not, he won. Because again, that's, that's kind of, so I want to present the certificate to him, letting him know how much I appreciated him this year, all the hard work he's put in, the hard work he put in with me, the hard work he put in on, by himself. He doesn't, no one deserves this more than him. So if you can, just give him a round of applause.
Coach, coach, for the, coach, for those of us who don't throw discs, would you explain what happens when you PR something?
That's, that's his personal best, so, yeah. Personal record, yeah. It's whenever he beat, uh, he beats his throw from the previous meet. You're welcome.
All right, well done. Congratulations, Luke. I'm going to be pretty amazed if Ty Holbrook and Coach Ward are here because I believe right now Ty is in fourth place at the state meet. So the boys' state competition is going on right now and our hopes and prayers are that he does as well as Ms. Lewis, who is our state champion in golf. So, Coach Addison?
Thank you, guys, for having us this evening. I was going to start with her, but I'm going to go ahead and start down here because I just want to say a, a big thank you to Coach Ward and Coach Kennedy because even though we're boys and girls, we all work together and they do a lot for us. Coach Kennedy, we share a coach and she does an amazing job for us and really we'd be lost without her. So I just want to say thank you to her. I want to say thank you to our athletic director, Dwight Butler, for always showing up and supporting our golfers, win or lose. Other coaches are always really impressed that he always shows, not only shows up, but he always stays to the end. He's there to congratulate or to console, but he's always there. Coaches and players greatly appreciate you, Coach Butler, so thank you for all you do to him. And now, it is my great honor to introduce you to the 5A state champion, Mason Lewis. If you have not had the pleasure to watch Mason play, you've truly missed watching greatness. She is a champion both on and off the course and her summer reads like the LPGA Tour. It's filled with championship events from the Carolinas to California. She is relentless in her quest to play Division One golf and beyond. So don't be surprised one day when you turn your TV on and you see Mason Lewis.
All right, one more recognition tonight and that is our national qualifying horse judging team. And I'll ask Ms. Kerr to come up and do the honors.
Thank you all for having us and this is like a huge deal. It's kind of something as an ag teacher, you never win a horse contest or a dairy contest or livestock. So it's a really big deal, especially, uh, three of my girls are freshmen and so brand new, have never done this before. And so going with a new team and winning state is truly a great, great honor. Naomi here, she's been competing in horse contests for a very long time, so she's kind of the senior veteran of the team and she definitely helped me step forward and coach our younger members. The most unfortunate thing I think about this whole state winning thing, they can never compete in a contest again, so they are done. But we do go to nationals at the end of October and they represent not only Granbury, but the entire state of Texas against the entire country. So that is really, really cool. Like I said, it never happens in an ag teacher's career and being in my second year, it's pretty, it's pretty awesome. So I just wanted to introduce my girls. Maddie Lee, she couldn't make it tonight, but we have Naomi Ornellis right here. So she was second place overall in the state and there was 272 kiddos that competed, so pretty awesome. And then we have Blythe Augburn and I think she was, weren't you 15th in the state? 15th. And then Ashton Limming and she was 19th in the state. And for those of you that don't know what horse judging is, it's pretty intensive. These kids have traveled all over the state and they basically are going and evaluating horses on their performance abilities. So there's eight classes and four of them will be made up of like bodybuilder kind of horses. And these kiddos have to evaluate their structural soundness and their ability to do their job. So they basically look for the biggest muscly horse and that's the winner. And then the next four classes are riding classes. So they're evaluating the horse's ability to do cues that his rider gives him and also the ability for that rider to actually correctly go through a pattern. So they're evaluating them just like a judge would and so to go to state is pretty cool. It's very hard to get here, so I just wanted to say thank you all, ladies, and good job.
Do we have parents or family? Oh, yeah, we do. All right. Great, thank you so much. From someone who doesn't know the front end from the back end of a horse, I'm really impressed, so good job, good job. All right, Dr. Glenn, are there any other recognitions tonight or?
Uh, no other recognitions, Mr. President, but I'm going to move just real quickly into an informational report. Proud to present the G I S D Board of Trustees with a state commendation from the State Board of Educator, Education, rather, Kevin Ellis, who sent you guys a commendation, essentially recognizing the Granbury I S D Board of Trustees for their continuing education credits and team building sessions in 2021. So well done and I'll present that to the President, Mr. Mark Jackson.
Totally unexpected, but that's, that's great. Appreciate the recognition. All right, we're about to move into our consent agenda items and then some action items after that. This is an opportunity if some of you need to go and bell, you're welcome to. This is, this is the, yeah, I think folks who left were going to leave. But nonetheless, these are important matters. So the consent items, just so you know, are usually well thought through, the, the board's been well appraised, some things we've been working on sometimes for some time. And so as a matter of business and to save time, we put them in the consent agenda. I will say there's one item I would like to pull from the consent agenda and that's 9A4, the workshop with Huckabee on June 7th. And I think we have decided not to do it on that day, so we can just pull that if you would, from the consent items. Are there any other consent items that the board would like to either pull or discuss?
Mr. President, I would like to discuss the donations from our community. You know, we have a large number of our students who are on free and reduced price lunches, but we have a number of students who fall through the crack because they're those parents that are working and are just above that level and they're, they put charges for their kids to eat lunch and those charges have to be paid. We had a family and I certainly want to recognize and I hope I pronounce their, their name correctly, the Hachsmann family stepped up with $1,000 to help those youngsters pay for their lunches. Additionally, the Pecan Baptist Church stepped up with $400. So youngsters are going to be able to eat their lunches because someone in the community stepped up and took care of those. As usual, the optimists have been on our donation list. They spent, donated $1,500 to DECA and to the storeways. First National Bank donated $250 to AMS. Cali Travers donated $100 to the HOSA organization. And Barry Smith donated $1,000 to M J R O T C. And then we had a nomination from the Campus Box Media to G H S cheer. Folks, that's $4,660 that community members stepped up with and presented to this school district for those kids. So chop at home, bank at home, do whatever you do at home. And if you know any of these folks, let them know how much they are appreciated. And thank you, Mr. President, for the.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions on any of the consent items tonight?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the items on the consent, consent agenda as presented.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Alana, a second from Mr. Willis. All of us in favor of approving the consent items, raise your hand. Thank you. Yeah, item 9B tonight is to consider a nomination for Region 11 Position D, which is a seat on the TASB board. TASB being the Texas Association of School Boards. This is a body that represents us as a corporate body statewide. They do a lot of good and they, they come together typically once a year at, I believe, TASB Conference at the end of September. And we don't necessarily have to nominate anyone for this seat as other districts in Region 11, I'm sure will be nominating folks. But I for one would like to nominate someone, someone who's expressed interest to me, although maybe our greenest trustee, our most fervent and enthusiastic and zealous trustee that I know is a quick study and will represent us very, very well if, should she be elected. But I would certainly like to place the nomination, Dr. Paula McDonald, for that seat.
I move that we make that nomination of, of Dr. McDonald to serve on the TASB, as a director on the TASB board and wish her good luck.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you. You have the motion then from Dr. Harrington, a second from Barbara Townsend to nominate Dr. Paula McDonald for Region 11 Position D, seat on the TASB board. And Dr. McDonald, you know, you'll have a little homework, you've got a question there and some information you'll have to complete. I believe we'll have some signatures needed on that, but we'll make sure we get it off. But that said, I don't see anyone opposed, but we'll go ahead and vote. All of us in favor of nominating Dr. McDonald? Chris? Okay, all right. So the motion carries. Congratulations, Paula, and good luck. We hope the rest of the districts in our region will see it, that you're a great candidate. Item 9C is consider approve a resolution regarding the purchase of real property consisting of a total of 10.38 acres, more or less, located at 320 Warnet Court and 305 Davis Road, Granbury, Hood County, Texas. Insights are abstract, 502, et cetera, as legally described here in the board book. Dr. Glenn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight we bring before you the opportunity to purchase a approximately 10 acres located adjacent Oakwoods Elementary. This is a piece of property the district has looked at for some time. As many of you know who are familiar with that campus, Oakwood is, Oakwoods is somewhat landlocked and it's nearly impossible to expand the campus or provide any type of traffic release, relief without, without purchasing this property. For some time, for those of you who aren't in the audience or that are out in the audience tonight, the district has tried to acquire this piece of property and the price has just been too high. However, recently the seller reached out to the district and we were able to negotiate a favorable contract. So it is a recommendation of the administration that we approve the purchase of the land at 320 Warnet Court and 305 Davis Road at this time as presented. We have anyone here from Oakwoods?
And so, Dr. Glenn, just a little further information. So this property will allow us to, to do a couple of things. Probably the first and foremost important thing is provide relief. I think anyone who's been around Oakwoods in the morning and out on 377 at the light to turn on the Davis Road, it's just, it's, it's impossible. And around the school, it's so cramped because they're, they're landlocked and really quite dangerous, I think, for the kids getting in and out of cars. So this allows to put a feeder road, kind of a roundabout around school.
That's correct. So it's, uh, the, the reasoning for purchasing the property be threefold. First is to relieve traffic congestion, which will not be something that happens overnight because it's going to require a extensive construction to get a loop around that facility. But it will allow us to loop the entire building. Secondly, it'll allow the opportunity for expansion. Again, is. expansion. Again, as we continue to grow, and we know that we're growing because we have a meeting tomorrow to actually discuss growth with our demographer, we need the ability to expand that campus. And then finally, I'll say that it's, it's a little bit of a safety issue. As you know, the, that property specifically has been used multiple times, renters coming in and out, and, and it's not the cleanness of properties. I don't know how to, how to say it politely, but it's, it's kind of an eyesore as it sets next, it sits next to one of our, our established elementary schools. And so if we can acquire that land and clean it up, that only benefits GISD.
Thank you for that, Dr. Glenn. Board, I know you're aware, we, we have been able to discuss this under a real property in closed session for some months. And really, I think we do go back two to three years at least in talking to this seller. Understand, we get offered property all the time. Everyone has oceanfront property in Arizona to sell us, you know, it's, it's amazing. But this, I think, is a very prudent purchase and good stewardship of the funds of the district to acquire for all the said reasons Dr. Glenn stated. And I don't think you, you mentioned the possibility of an outdoor learning center as well, similar to what we have with a couple of other campuses.
That's correct. So long-term plans, it is 10 acres, and approximately half of the property could be used for expansion and, and a loop around the facility. The other half is in a, we'll say, a low-level area, so an outdoor learning, an outdoor learning environment, similar to what we have at AMS, is certainly possible down the road.
Any other questions or comments from the board table?
Well, I'd like to say I was part of Oakwoods when it opened up from the very beginning, and from the very beginning, there has been a traffic problem, as well as when the kids go out to play, being exposed to the property owners and the, the pets that might be outside and things of that nature, and for safety reasons, as well as being able to expand and make it easier on the, the traffic flow and picking up and just making it safer all the way around. I think it's, I think it's a good use of taxpayer money to make sure that we have that property and that we have some control over it. If we don't, if we're not able to get that and someone else gets it, we have no control of what goes on. And so I think this was, is a good deal for the district, and I think long-term will benefit Oakwoods and the district.
Thank you, Ms. Alana. Before a motion's made, whoever makes it, if you would, please include in the, the motion that we do have a proposed contract, that we need the ability to move the closing date if needed. And at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the resolution regarding the purchase of the real property consisting of a total of 10.38 acres. I also add that we, on that contract, that we give the superintendent the right to, the option to move the closing date as needed. And I second.
Thank you, Dr. Harrington, and I'm sorry, the second was from over there. Dr. McDonald, thank you. I didn't look up. Okay, so we now have a motion and a second with the ability to, to push the closing date if we need to. I think this is a, a good move. All those in favor of the resolution, raise your hand. And we have six, please note, we have six votes in the affirmative and one abstention. Mr. Moore, I believe, has a prior business connection to the seller, so he chose to abstain.
Thank you, Mr. President. A copy of the resolution of the Board of Trustees to purchase the real property will be placed with the minutes of this meeting.
Okay, we're down to our last action item tonight, item 9D, approve pay scales for 2021, 2022. Wes Jones?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We had a TASBE study done in the fall of 2019, and they looked at our data and compared to other districts our size and our area. And then in February of 2020, they made a presentation to the board and looked at our, our information and made recommendations for our pay scales based on that study. And due to COVID, they pushed it, they placed that on hold to see what the legislature would do and what our budget would look like. And now that we see that we're in good financial shape, we are recommending that the board approve these pay scales increases before you, and no raises were given to this point. Let's, let's be clear on that. It's not that no raises will not be given.
To this point, to this point.
The first step, the first step is to approve the pay scales, and then we'll come back in June and recommend raises. I do want to thank Mr. Jones and his team for working with TASBE. Again, this was, this information in this study was done in 2019. Obviously, with COVID, things have been put on hold, and I do appreciate the, Ms. Sockel speaking on behalf of the bus drivers in open forum, but I will say that we also have cafeteria workers, we have counselors, we have teachers, we have principals, we have a lot of individuals in this, in this district who have worked extremely hard, and we want to make sure that they're all taken care of equally. And so next month, we'll be bringing a recommendation on salary increases to you.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the pay scales for 21, 2021, 22, as presented.
And I will second that.
Thanks, Ms. Alana, for the motion to approve the pay scales as presented, and Mr. Moore for the second. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Jones? Hey, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving the pay scales, raise your hand, and the motion carries. All right, we're into reports, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Glenn for a superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've gone quick after an hour and four minutes of recognitions. We knocked out the, the action items pretty quick. I tell you, let me start by saying this. We're about to finish up the school year, and, and I cannot say enough about the, the teachers and administrators and staff in Granbury ISD. As we get ready to wind down our year, I'm so thankful that we are not a district that will be going into, going into the, the middle of June or late June, that we're going to get to wrap it up. It, it was a tough start in August. We've, we've seen our, our teachers fight through a lot of adversity, and we are so grateful and appreciative of the hard work they put in to make this year possible for our students, because I do believe we are at our best when we offer in-person instruction. We have a couple of big events this week. The first is Thursday night. We have Star's graduation, and I see Ms. Rodriguez back there, and I believe 28, is that correct?
We're at 29.
29. She'll have... She'll, she'll have 31 by, by, by Thursday. She'll figure it out away. And then, and then we'll have summer launch on Friday morning at 9:00 a.m. I know a lot of staff in the room tonight. And then next week, certainly looking forward to holding graduation for right at 450-ish seniors at Pirate Stadium, and so certainly excited, and it's going to be a beautiful evening with no rain, if you're, if you're wondering. So outside of that, thanks to all of our counselors. I see some counselors and principals in the room. STAR testing is over, AP testing is over, great job on that. I look forward to presenting preliminary results to you when they arrive. Hopefully, in July, we should have some preliminary numbers. Also want to thank Jeff Metter for getting Facebook Live up for us. We're still working through technology issues to get our board meeting broadcast, but on short turnaround, he put that together, and Jeff, we're grateful for...
And our technology department.
And our technology department. So Jeff and Danielle, job well done. Just a reminder, trustees, tomorrow night, we will be meeting with Bob Templeton at Templeton Demographics. We will begin a preliminary study, and he will also be back in the fall. Something that you're seeing trend statewide is numbers are down in public school districts across the state due to the pandemic, but he is looking at a rebound, not only, not only a rebound of students that were in our district that, for whatever reason, chose just not to participate. They kind of opted out of this year, either homeschool or to private school or, or whatever. But he is seeing just numbers swing up just in general as Texas continues to grow and we see more people move into our state. And then finally, next month, there'll be two reports that normally would come in May, but due to kindergarten roundup at Emma, Kelly Lambert will present the Head Start Report next month, and Dwight Butler, obviously, is at the state golf tournament. He will present our Athletic Report and commend all of our coaches as well. So, Mr. President, that's what I have for you tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to present.
Thank you, Dr. Glenn. Great way to wrap up the year. Good report. We appreciate you and all the team. Well, we are down to our financial statements and cash flow and investment report tonight, and I, I don't want to belabor this or, or make it too difficult. We had some time with Mr. Williams in the back. As, as you all know, it's pretty public. Dobie Williams is leaving us for greener pastures, and we, we really do wish him the best. We truly do. He has been one of the most tried and true department heads in, in the last few years, assistant superintendent, and just done a terrific job. And Dobie, we just can't thank you enough for everything you've done. And I'll, I'll let you do your reports, and then if any of the board would like to chime in at the end, or berate you or ask you some hard-hitting questions, they can do that, too. So go ahead, Dobie.
I'll start off by saying y'all, y'all make it easy, so, working with you guys. So, let's look at the April 30 financial report. This represents revenues and expenditures from September 1st, the beginning of our fiscal year, until April 30th, 2021. Revenue collected to date is 92.67% of the budgeted amount compared to 95.59%. If you look at the statement itself, that tax collections were right, right on track where we need to be. Of course, interest revenue is not what we were hoping for, and our state revenues are, are not up there, but they'll, those will even out by the end of the year, along with our on-behalf revenues. So we should be, that, after we make a few revenue adjustments, we should be in, in really good shape. Expenditures to date represent 61.07% compared to 60.45%. We bumped a little past that because we're actually in school this year, whereas this time last year, we were not in school. So, it's not that this year's revenue expenses are up, it's that last year's expenses were down a little bit. Unless there's some questions, I'm going to move on to the cash flow and investment report. That continues to just be dismal. I don't know what else to say about it. It's, it's, investment returns are just not good anywhere, and especially for a government entity that has the restrictions we have placed on us. But as we do, day in and day out, we continue to do as, as best we can, working with our local bank, our depository, the investment pools we're able to work with, place money with. And, and like I said, as this board, through their leadership, we, we branched out and did some kind of different things with investments a few years ago, and those, those have continued to be, give us some better returns than we have with, with some of the other investments. So if there's any questions, I can answer on that. I'll be happy to do that. If there are none, that is all I have.
Dobie, you left us in great shape, great fiscal form, and again, we just can't thank you enough. You'll have huge shoes to fill, so, but Godspeed to you. We appreciate everything. Thanks. Okay, we are down to our personnel items, or staff recommendations, rather, that we discussed in closed session. Dr. Glenn?
Thank you, Mr. President. You do have the personnel report as prepared by the HR Department. Want to thank Mr. Jones and his team for putting that together for you tonight. I also thank our principals. Have, I guess, coming off the back end of a pandemic, we do have quite a few resignations, and they have been quick to fill those positions, so we appreciate their hard work. Most importantly, though, I do want to note three administrative changes. The first, you already said, the retirement of, not the retirement, the resignation of Dobie Williams. He wishes it was a retirement. But the resignation of Dobie Williams, who will greatly miss. Also, we received the retirement notification today for Donnie Cody at Oakwoods, who will be greatly missed as well. And we are proud also to recommend tonight the next principal of Manbrino Steam Academy, and I think you have your family here with you, and that is Heather Bojolay. So appreciate you being here tonight. I tell you what... Your kids are tough, making them sit through this meeting, so appreciate them. I love it. Congratulations. She is an outstanding leader, just a transformational leader. The, the interview committee just fell in love with her, and she is going to do dynamic things over at Manbrino. And so, Gency Ross has trained up another one for us, and we're grateful for her leadership as well. So Heather, congratulations. Mr. President, you have the personnel report before you tonight, and is our recommendation that you approve as presented?
You'll entertain a motion.
Well, then I move that we approve the staff recommendations as presented.
And I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for the motion, and Mr. Willis for the second. All those in favor of approving staff recommendations as presented tonight, raise your hand. Motion carries. And I have 7:27 p.m. being no other business. This meeting's adjourned. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you, Board.